We're ready. It is. Good morning, everyone. They've called our meeting to order. It is nine o'clock, September thirteenth. And we're ready to get rocking rolling. John, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John. All right, we'll move on to item number three. Well, the clerk, please do real call.
Commissioner District One, Randy Netherland.
I'm here.
Commissioner District Two, Kevin Schutte. Commissioner District Three, Sharon Trask.
I'm here. Thank you very much. Let's move on to item number four, correspondence and organizational business. Item four point one, other clerk read correspondence, please.
The Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board sent in the following: A notice of liquor license application in lieu of current privilege for the Lucky Dog Casino, and a special occasion liquor license application for Long Live the Kings; a sound broadband powered by wave sent in notification regarding rate increases; and the Department of Natural Resources sent in their P I L T eligible lands by county for payment in lieu of taxes through June 2022.
Great, thank you. Now let's move on to item four point two, Housing and Behavioral Health Advisory Board's Citizen Openings News Release. Melissa.
The Board of County Commissioners are accepting applications to fill two community positions for the Mason County Housing and Behavioral Health Advisory Board. The applicant must not have direct affiliations with agencies that receive funding. The boards are looking for community members with an interest in public health, mental health, substance use disorder, homelessness, and/or affordable housing. The Housing and Behavioral Health Advisory Board is a seven-member board appointed to advise the Board of County Commissioners on the use of state and local funds to address affordable housing, homelessness, and behavioral health treatment in Mason County. The advisory board typically meets at least once per month on the fourth Wednesday from nine to eleven a.m., with special meetings scheduled as necessary. Appointed board members serve a four-year term. How to apply? Application forms may be obtained from the Commissioner's Office, three six zero four two seven nine six seven zero, extension four one nine, or on the website at www.masoncountywa.gov. To find the application on the website, go to the menu Advisory Boards, select Housing and Behavioral Health Board, and click on the link Advisory Board Application. Applications to serve on the board are being accepted until the position is filled and should be submitted to the Mason County Commissioners, four one one North Fifth Street, Shelton, Washington, nine eight five eight four. Thank you.
All right, let's move on to item four point three, preliminary budget presentation.
Good morning, Commissioners. Patty Murey, Mason County Auditor. Jen Byerly sort of stole my thunder yesterday in the briefing, but I wanted to just take a moment to do a hat tip to the financial services staff. This was a difficult year for us. We had staff turnover, we had injury, we had illness during preparation of the preliminary budget. I'm not, you know, it's generally a bad idea to call out one member of a team, but Michelle Crowe, without Michelle, we would not have been on time. And so I just want to recognize that and say thanks. I'm incredibly proud to have these professionals working for me and working for Mason County, and we're lucky for them. So the preliminary budget was submitted officially to you on the sixth, but this is your first meeting, so I just wanted to say it's in and thank you.
Patty, I agree with you. Michelle is an incredible gem of a person that we have here working for us. You have an incredible staff. I will tell you, this was the best-looking budget I've seen in my ten years, eleven years. We owe them a great debt, and it's looking really good.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Absolutely. That's it.
All right, thank you so very much. All right, let's move on to item number five. This is the time we set aside for citizen input. We have three minutes per person. We do have a fifteen-minute time limit, so we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. And we will first begin with citizen input here in our commission chambers, and then we will go to the screen. So Bill, we'll get you in just a moment. All right. Do, yes, Megan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Everybody. My name is Miguel Gutierrez. I'm a board member of Community Lifeline. I'm a resident here at Mason County. I'm also a resident of downtown Shelton. I walk my rescue dog twice a day, every day, on the county and city trails and streets. And sometimes I want to give a shout out to Shelton Adopt a Pet, who was housing my dog when she was homeless and until she found her forever home with me. Sometimes I would walk my dog with my good friend's five-year-old daughter, and she just started kindergarten, so shout out to Ashley if you're out there. Keep working hard, crush kindergarten. She can't wait to walk downtown, especially during Christmas time and when the Christmas trees are up and Christmas lights. And so a quick story is, we were doing that when, last December, taking a walk, and she had a hard question for me. Why are all these people here? And I said, they don't have homes, hon. They don't have anywhere to go. They don't have moms to go to and hot chocolate to go home to. When we get home, we're going to have, you know, hot chocolate and cookies that your mom's making, but they're not going to. And she just kind of walked up to a woman who's writing in her journal and said, ma'am, do you have a safe place to stay tonight? And it just crushed my soul that as much as I'm doing on the board of Community Lifeline is that I'm not doing enough because there are still people on the streets, and it's going to get cold and winter is coming. So what I'd like to do here is give us an invitation to come to our Community Lifeline event that is coming at Newland Park on September twenty-fourth. It is going to be a family fun fest, so bring your family. And we're going to have face painting, music, food, and a silent auction. I might be auctioning off this awesome hoodie right here. So please come and support us, and winter is coming, so please, please help us out if you can. And bring your checkbooks. Or actually, you can bring a card because we might have a swipe that you can donate to our cause. I also wanted to give thank you and express gratitude to all the county employees for their involvement with the Homelessness Task Force at the City of Shelton. I want to thank Sharon Trask for being part of that. I want to thank Melissa and Dave for being there, and also our law enforcement officers, the Sheriff's Department is also there. So I want to make sure that they are, they are, I'm sorry. Thinking about all the things that we could be doing better. I have a lot of gratitude for them for taking their time and their energy to make Shelton a better place. And I want to give another invitation to the October eleventh spotlight for the Shelton, the spotlight, the Shelton Spotlight on October eleventh, where we're going to give the task force recommendations on homelessness. And finally, my last point is, when you go through your documents today and think about all the public projects that we're going through, I would ask, when I ask you to, when you score your project, please think about the impact for the public good. Please think about how many people benefit from them. Think about, will it be the community members with below-medium incomes? Or is it going to be the members with higher incomes? I would hope that they would be for a community benefit for the lower-income folks. Also, will it be the community members who are hit harder by COVID? Will it be the vulnerable community members in highly populated areas? Will it be the vulnerable community members in environmentally sensitive areas? So I'd like you to think about that when you go through your scoring. Please think about the whole community and not just certain private entities who might get a public good from our tax dollars and our bonding. And is the good, the public good that's going to come out of this coming because of a secondary, tertiary outcome, or was it directly for a public good? And I'd like you Commissioners to think about that when you do your scoring. Lastly, did we consult with the mayor? Hey Eric, if you're watching. Or the city manager, Mark? Or did you talk with Jeff? Or have any of you talked to other council members about the impacts of the county funding on all the different projects that are in the city? And if you consider that, how can we collaborate? And how can we have synergy and work together so that we're not duplicating funds? But also that it works together for the broader benefit for everybody. So those are the three points. It's kind of an invitation sandwich, like invitation, two invitations and the story that I wanted to tell. But thank you very much for the time. And I want to, I come here with gratitude and thankfulness for us to be able to practice democracy and for me to be able to have a voice to speak for all the residents of Shelton, not just a few. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, do we have anyone else in the room that would like to say anything? All right. All right, Bill, I saw your hand up. What you got for us?
Hello. Yeah, my name is Bill Long. I live at twenty-one North Steel Lane East in Bushport. And I'm here representing the Friends of Lake Kushman Dog Park. And as you're aware, on the last month, we failed in our attempt to get the Pet Safe Grant. We did come in eleven out of twenty, which wasn't bad. It was based on community support, and I believe since our small community, we lost out to quite a few large communities on the East Coast. I just wanted to personally thank the Commissioners and John Taylor of the Parks Department for all the support that you've given us. And I wanted to make sure that you are aware that we are continuing our efforts to build the dog park. We are working with our individual members, and we're looking for corporate donations and sponsorships. And so we'll be continuing, and thank you again for all the support to the Commissioners, the Park Department, and the total community.
All right, Bill, thank you very much. And I think eleven is not bad for a nationwide search.
Thank you.
All right, do we have anyone else in the Zoom room that would like to speak? All right, seeing none. Let's move on to item number six, adoption of the agenda.
Madam Chair, move for adoption of the agenda as presented.
All right, I will second that. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving on to item number seven, approval of minutes. We do not have any minutes to approve today, so, man, we are cruising. Let's move on to item number eight, approval of the action agenda. Commissioners will read each item on the action agenda. We will then have the opportunity to either pull or put items off for separate discussion or vote. And also under, we will also allow the citizens to pull an item off for a separate discussion or vote. Commissioner, could you take items eight point one through eight point five? And I'll take eight point six through eight point eight.
I need to have my documents updated. I only have through eight point six, just so you know. Okay, yes, Madam Chair, item number eight point one, approval of warrants and treasures, electronic remittance, claims clearing fund numbers, warrants, eight zero nine zero one, one, eight zero nine zero one nine nine through eight zero nine zero four oh three. The amount, one million, two hundred twenty thousand, seven hundred forty-nine dollars and seventy cents. Treasures, electronic remittance, one hundred eighty-seven thousand, one hundred thirty-four dollars, seventeen cents. Approval of the following contracts for the two thousand twenty-three Visitor Information Center V I C awards, North Mason Chamber of Commerce for forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars, Mason County Historical Society for nineteen thousand, one hundred ninety-seven dollars, the Shelton Mason County Chamber of Commerce, one hundred six thousand, one hundred twenty-three dollars, for a total amount of one hundred seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two. Item number eight point three, approval to update the description of and post the Public Defender Number Two position. Item number eight point four, approval to cancel the U.S. Department of the Interior's Comish River Gauge and replace it with the Toll Hawk Gauge for the estimated total purchase, installation, and initial monitoring costs of one thousand six hundred dollars and annual dashboard cost of two hundred and fifty per year. Item number eight point five, approval for the Public Works to procure the twenty twenty-one H A M M HD one-three V V Asphalt Compactor for the amount of twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents as a special market value purchase.
I forgot that was me. Item eight point six, I was just enjoying hearing you reading. Approval of the resolution for County Road Project CRP number two zero four two Shelton Valley Road, Winter Creek Culvert Replacement Project, to authorize the chair to sign all pertinent documents. And, sorry about that. My computer is challenging me. Item eight point seven, oh wait, let me finish this one. All pertinent documents and Public Works to advertise set bid opening date, time, award contract, and any change orders. The contract award will be announced during a regular meeting of the board. Item eight point seven, approval of the January first, twenty twenty-two through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, collective bargaining agreement, CBA for Teamsters Union Local Number two five two, representing Mason County Appraisers Unit with retro to June first, twenty twenty-two. Item eight point eight, approval of the effective upon ratification through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, CBA for Teamsters Union Local Number two fifty-two, representing Mason County Prosecutor's Clerical Unit. Having read through each item, are there any items that you would like to be removed for separate discussion or vote? Any items anybody out there would like to be removed for special discussion or vote? Anybody in the Zoom room? All right, seeing none.
Madam Chair, I move for the approval of the action agenda in its entirety, item number eight point one through item number eight point eight, with some comments.
I will second that. We do have motion in a second to approve the items eight point one through eight point eight as written. I'll call for the vote. No, let's have discussion, and then I'll call for the vote.
I just would, Madam Chair, I would just like to give a special thank you. Again, our Public Works Department has really gone a long ways over the years on learning how to find things on the secondary market and saving incredible amounts of money. And people don't understand, well, they're saving a hundred thousand at a pop. Think about that. That's a position, or that's another piece of equipment that we couldn't have had. They really do a spectacular job, and I know I'm saying it over and over again, but that's because they're doing it over and over again. We went through years where they refused to do it almost. It was really hard to try and get them to look and think outside the box. It had to be brand new, especially for things you only use once in a while. It didn't make sense, but they need to be patted on the back because all that money that they're saving gives us the opportunity to service people more. A very special thank you. Mary is on the line. For Mary, for Nicole, for Mark, for Cabot Dow, and also to our Teamsters itself. We're very blessed here in Mason County. A lot of these unions, it ends up being so adversarial. And we used to, many, many years ago, ten, eleven years ago, it was very adversarial. We work together here in Mason County, and we find a way to come up with solutions and numbers that are complementary to both. We're not using or wasting the people's money, and they're not going for everything they can try to take from us when it comes to, everybody's trying to just do a fair deal and a fair wage with it. And with that, we've been very successful. So we need to give a special thank you to all of our staff because this has been a spectacular exercise that we've gone through with these contracts. We have a few more we're working on right now. So thank you very much for that. Mary and Nicole and Cabot Dow and Associates, we appreciate you. And we appreciate the Teamsters for working with us and coming up with such a good contract. If you look at the contract, folks, take your time and look at yourself. You're going to be shocked what we do around here. This is not what you see on the news of the fourteenth. We all work together, and it's a legitimate, realistic compensation strategy. So thank you.
Man, I would, I'll second all of those comments. We do have an amazing Public Works Board, or Public Works team. And take a look at our roads. Our roads are a statement. They are so much better, do I dare say it, than even the state roads? Because our people rock. We have such an amazing team here in Mason County. Every person in Mason County is so special and unique in their own ways. And I say it all the time on a lot of the committees and the boards that I'm on. Mason County absolutely does rock. And you can see it in our people and our actions, so.
Madam Chair, when it comes to the roads, nine out of every ten calls I get are actually on, because of highway roads that are not ours. But they're mad about it, and we do it, though. The thing is, our staff will call the state. We do actually represent to, trying to get these things fixed and done. And they do get done because of the pressure that's put on through the county, but it's just not ours. So just know that. And you can tell the difference when you leave ours and you join theirs. Go to the next county, as soon as you hit the county line, you see it.
Absolutely. Yeah. All right, I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Thank you very much. Let's move on to item number nine. This is the time we set aside for department heads or other elected officials to talk to us and the public. Anybody in the room want to do it? I love to watch the faces, it's fun. All right, moving on to item number ten, public hearings. And we have no public hearings set at this time. So let's move on to item number eleven, boards' calendars and reports. Commissioner, would you go first?
Sure. It's been an interesting few weeks since we've been gone. I seem to have funerals on every agenda, and I had to go to California twice since our last meeting for family members, but also for locals such as Terry Patterson, who just did also. We, I attended the opioid overdose awareness events. We have one in Shelton, and then we have another one in North Mason. Very well attended, and it's a time to reflect and realize that there's a lot of lives that are lost, but there's also a lot of lives that are saved. And we don't usually talk about those. At this event, we do. At this event, you'll see our staff actually going out there and passing out and giving something that's called Narcan, which is, gives you the ability to take something that's overdosing on fentanyl or overdosing on some opioid and give them another opportunity at life. And it's very easy to do, but there's a stigma around getting it and taking it. So I just want you to know, I carry one in each of my cars. I know you're not supposed to carry it in your car, but better to have it than not have it. Over the years, over the last few years, I have had the opportunity to use it once. Luckily for me, I didn't have to actually do it on the person because the people that were there knew what to do. All I had to do was present them with the Narcan. And I want to remind you, I've had different arguments with people over this because they think that because you're a drug addict and stuff, you know, let you, let your history be your history, what you do. You know, it's so funny because I want to remind you that everybody has another tomorrow, and things change. We start out one way in the morning, we wake up, we end up different at the end of the day. There's a lot of lives that have been saved over the years that have gone on to save other lives. And I look around at the people that are doing our programs. I can tell you, they are saving other lives. But more than that, imagine having this Narcan on you and that child in Olympia that was overdosed on fentanyl accidentally. The lives you save are all important. But that person that you save or help may just be there to save you when you accidentally, something happens to you. So again, a thank you to our staff. It was a wonderful event, as it always is, and it's very, very touching. And I know I got heavily involved when I lost three, I've coached over a thousand kids over the years. I lost three kids in a year and a half period. And I actually had lost more than that, but I had to do three services. I was officiated three services in a year and a half of the kids I coached. So this is what we can do about it. So please, just keep that in mind. I know, I'm sorry I'm going over on that one. I just wanted to just tell you, reach out to our public health staff. They will educate you. They will put together programs to provide you with the Narcan and show you how to use it. Please contact them. It'd be appreciated for all of us because it may be my child, even though my child doesn't do anything, it all changes tomorrow, it could be your child, you never know. So with that, we, I also had a left board meeting. We had our labor discussions each Monday. We've been meeting with them, and it's been wonderful. North Mason Community Voice, actually, I'm bringing this up because aside from the overdose awareness month, North Mason Community Voice put on another meeting in regards to fentanyl and the like, and our staff came out, as well as Jamie, our coroner, to give that side of the story. Coming up in the next weeks, I have Olympic Regional Clean Air Authority, another funeral for Don Polly here in Shelton. If you know him, he has the little antique store next to Nita's out there. Absolutely wonderful community member, another one that will be missed. Kind of tired of attending these and going there, but at the same time, I know it's a circle of life, but we could use a break. I'll be meeting with Monty in regards to Parks Trail. I know that he had met with you at one point to talk to you about that again. I'm not sure what he wants to bring forth as a city, but anything we can do to help, we help. That's what we do. And we look for different opportunities. I want to remind you, because he'll end up being, come back to you. We have two hundred and sixty-five, two hundred and ninety-five thousand in parks and trails, four trails. That's in the budget, so there is money there if you can find the nexus between Shelton and the like. In regards to what Miguel was talking about, it'd be a nice connection. The North Mason Chamber of Commerce Gala is coming up, and I am extremely honored to have been nominated as a Citizen of the Year for them. I have a finance committee meeting for the Olympic Regional Clean Air Authority. Mason County Housing Authority is also having a meeting. And I've got, you know, we have our WASAC webinars and the like, and then we'll come back and we'll do this all over again. So I'm sure there's stuff I left off. I'll catch it with, because we will both be at that event, most likely, that you were talking about, Miguel. We won't be conducting business, but we'll be in the same location, so we need to disclose that. Just in case, believe it or not, guys, if we take testimony, if you do testimony and you ask for money or something while we're there, and we're both there, that's considered action. So we have to let the public know we're going to be there at the same time so that you could all be there to see if we talk or collaborate.
That works, that works. All right, so today I have Turning Point meetings tonight. My granddaughter, I am pretty stinking proud of her. She's in JV soccer, and she's a rock star. My gosh, she's pretty amazing. But anyway, there's a game tonight. Shout out for Shelton Soccer's tonight. And then a birthday party for our pastor. Tomorrow morning is our local emergency planning meeting. And then I will be meeting with Cheryl with Timberland Libraries. Meeting with our HR director, my goodness. Timber County's meeting in person in Olympia, so excited. I will actually be attempting to play in a golf tournament. I would not say that, I would just say, stand clear. Because you never know, you never know. I will also be attending the gala. And we might have to coordinate dress because I don't want to wear the same thing that you're wearing, so.
My dresses and cleaners.
And then we have our county briefing. We do have several WASAC meetings. I'll be taking a tour of the North Mason Fire Building, the old one. Then we have Mason Transit Board Meeting. Did you have that one?
I did not.
Yeah.
I'll be at the Mason Transit Board Meeting.
There's a meet and greet up at Lakeland Village on the twenty-first, sponsored by the Republican Women's Group, for the Candidates, Turning Point Board Meeting, Hood Canal Improvement Club Candidates Night on the twenty-second at the New Community Church. I was going to attend the County Park Tour, but I will be driving to Ellensburg for a Legislative Steering Committee meeting. And then that night, there is, gosh, it's busy. An Olympia Master Builders meeting. I'll be attending that. Sheriff's Breakfast on Friday. We, I am so excited about this one. We just expanded and added two more offices to Turning Point. And so we are going to have that ribbon cutting next week. And I will be having an event at my house where lots of people are invited. Community Lifeline Sunrays around the twenty-third. And then I'll be going to a baseball game with the family, so that's fun. And I want to send out a special birthday. And I want to send out a special birthday wish to my my middle grandson. I've got six, not grandsons, but six total grandkids. Virtual Assembly, more Turning Point meetings. We do have Power of the Purse coming up, so just a little plug for that one. And Community Action Council Committee meeting. And we do have a Board of Health meeting on the twenty-seventh, but that's after our commission. And I think.
I will be doing the County Park Tour. I have that in my, in my schedule as well. My son's birthday is also on the fourteenth.
Is it?
Yeah. Poor guy, he got hurt playing football, though, and he's gonna have surgery on his knee a few days after that. So I'm gonna try and give him a last hurrah before he can't walk on that leg for a while, or put any, put any weight on it.
And then he'll be, he'll be like the bionic man.
Yep.
That's pretty cool. All right, that brings us to the end of our.
Madam Chair, I move we adjourn.
I will second that. We are adjourned. Thank you, guys.